We already did this.
For the other meeting.
One second.
Meeting now.
New meeting.
Yes. I'd like to have all the special meeting. April twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. I've read. Yeah, not at eleven. Pledge allegiance.
Sir, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call board members, please.
Wolfson. Censer. Russo. Ostergren. Milburn.
Second.
No.
Oh, I'll second then. Uh. Roll call, please.
Discussion.
Discussion. Yes, I second.
I have discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Chair. Can we change the time of the meeting?
Yeah, the clerk does it.
Okay.
Yep. Uh. Any other discussion? Call roll, please.
Um, Ostergren.
Yes.
Censer.
Yes.
Um, Wolfson. Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Public comment. New business. Jody, we're on to you.
So for three of you, this is your first committee of the whole. We do schedule these on a quarterly basis. The first two are the easiest because we're simply giving, I'm simply giving you the information. For instance, this one are projected endings after the accruals have been placed for the last year's budget, which of course is information that you need in order to understand where your fund balance is. And the next one will give you a better idea of where we are for the current year because we've only got about three and a half months of data right now for expenses and three months worth of revenues inputted. The last two are always the ones that take the longest. So if we keep doing this, maybe we could have a lunch break and then schedule at one. It's those are where the budget and finance committee, which is different than claims and accounts, will be presenting the proposals for the next year's budget that has to be approved by the end of November. And we're hopeful that this year there won't be hard choices to make like there were the last few years. There's your happy thing, Sheriff. That being said, the first topic I have for you, I always concentrate on the general funds. We have all of these special revenue funds. And I believe when you first started that I provided you the budget, a budget presentation report that we did for last year that provides you with all of the different funds, what money's in there. A lot of those are either funds that are created. For instance, Michelle's office has a automation fund and the automation fund receives money through statute. And that's their money. We keep track of it, make sure they're not going into negatives. But for the most part, what's there is there, what's not is there. Where it will start to matter to you more what they have spent in millage funds is closer to budgeting season or when you go to approve the fall L four zero two nine because the Board of Commissioners does have the discretion to lower in millage amount. Just because the voters approved one mil doesn't mean that you levy one mil. If you believe that they have enough in a fund balance to continue and allow for a lower millage in the next year's tax collections, you have that discretion to do that as the Board of Commissioners. That's a discussion and a vote. So that's where that information becomes really important. Twenty twenty-two. So accruals go all the way through January, February, March, and I'll always take the first two weeks of April because I learned very early on that our auditor actually looks at those two weeks as well, just in case there's any large bills in there. I can tell you right now that one of the areas that was well over budgeted by about probably twenty-seven thousand was the medical examiner budget. This is because there were bills from two thousand and twenty-one that were not given to us for autopsies that appeared. We have corrected this efficiently how it has worked is until that autopsy is finalized. And some of these autopsies can take to years waiting for certain medical doctors, et cetera, to come back as finalized. They weren't billing. Now I've just asked them, when you get the body and schedule an autopsy, send me the bill. If there's an additional bill for additional kidney has to be shipped out to the University of California for some specific dissection. Why you will be for that later, if that's later, that's fine. But the ones that are, these are twenty-one hundred dollar bills. So you can imagine they, they tend to add up when you're looking at a lot of, lot of deaths. E for a small county have a lot of statutory required autopsies. And a lot of that is because we have a, I didn't think of a polite way to say this. We have a lot of drug deaths. We have a lot of suicides due to depression and we have a lot of mental illness in our county. So that leads to a lot of suspicious deaths. Some of the other areas that are must, just as you're aware, and I'll get through to the little sheet I gave you. Any automobile death is automatically because you need to be able to rule out whether there were any substances involved and/or if there was any medical conditions that were involved or incurred. So just give you some ideas. The other portion of that budget that is trending quite, quite hefty is unclaimed bodies. So what happens is I pass away and my family doesn't like me because I was a jerk or I don't have free plan services. I sit with medical examiner's office until the county who is responsible pays for the cremation of the bodies. What we do in our county is once those are, once those are done, we do try to work with our medical examiner to apply for some sort of offset through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. But A, that doesn't even cover half of what the costs are. And B, unless you have clear proof that they have no assets, they're not going to cover you. So your, last year we're at almost eleven thousand dollars for unclaimed bodies. That's just a thought, just some things you never think about that are a part of our budget. Obviously, the general fund budget has all of our statutory mandatory services and then those services that support those as well. Coach Stevenson's offices in there, jury commission, all of your courts, emergency management, courthouse security, prosecuting attorneys, sheriff administrative officers. So lots of fun things, elections. And so the money goes to those things first and then comes back to anything else that, that may attempt. That being said, we actually did really well with our budgeting last year. As far as what money we bring in, what money we bring out. Our final revenue is estimated right at about ninety-nine point five percent of our budget. We were slightly over in expenditures, we're at one oh one point three percent. So all things considered, we were one and a half percent accurate in our overall general fund budgeting. I will tell you, we have one fund or special funds that was over budgeted. We knew that it was going to be over budget, Sheriff. Staffing, staffing for our road patrol and overtime hours, illnesses. It just, I think it killed you last year. So they did dip into their fund balance. They are still within a fifteen to eighteen percent. But I highly anticipate we'll see that dipped into again this year because the trends aren't changing. We're hiring of law enforcement or extra needs and curriculars of that. So we began in two thousand and twenty-two with a fund balance of one million, four sixty-three, eight eighty-three. That put us right at fifteen percent. Our final revenues minus then additional allocations to two special funds which are over budget, childcare fund and law library, I'll get back to that in a second. Give us a projected fund balance of about one million, two hundred and seventy-six, nine hundred and seven and seventy-eight cents. That will drop us down to twelve point twenty-five percent. Now ideally, you want to have three, three months of revenue. Three months of revenue was in the two million dollar range. I don't think most people would look at a twenty-three, twenty-four percent fund balance in the public and, and to be happy that we're not putting some of that back into our needs in our community. So this Board of Commissioners, prior to even me being here, has a fund to balance goal policy which states that it will be between fifteen and eighteen percent at all times is, is where they'd like the funding to be. And every, anything over eighteen percent will be invested back into general fund, general fund employees or building needs services, that type of thing. So we're looking at roughly twelve point two five percent. So our change was about one eighty-six, nine seventy-five, twenty-two. Like I said, some of those larger issues, you know, forty thousand dollars comes across in your MEIs. We did have some overtime in a couple of other departments funded. The jail actually ended up fairly well. Their revenues came in, but their expenses came in right along with it. We have in years seen um, some much worse years from the jail. For that being said, we did expend a little bit more in emergency management than we had budgeted for simply because there was a change in who was in that position due to the death of the person that we had set that budget for. So the benefits increased by about thirty thousand. So give or take, we did our best. We did accrue about three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars back in payroll and accounts payable from bills spent in two thousand and twenty-three that were for two thousand and twenty-two expenses. We have one sixty-eight, two eighty-seven, twenty-two that was transferred from the tax payment fund for the special assessment billings. When it comes to the point for the Board of Commissioners to make decisions. This amount and then the following amounts that will come from that. So probably another hundred thousand dollars. You're all set to be paid out of the tax payment fund prior to being reimbursed from the special assessment. It is to your discretion whether or not that stays as is with them being paid from the tax payment fund or you would like to pursue reimbursement from the state. Remember that when that comes up, that is to your discretion. None of that is set in stone. We also transferred twenty-four thousand dollars from the tax payment fund for two of our early retiree buyouts that came in. So we are looking at starting this year, two thousand and twenty-three, pretty much so in a deficit of one eighty-six, nine seventy-five, twenty-two. Now we can move on to two thousand and twenty-three when somebody has questions or has questions. We were right at fifteen percent last year. I want to say it was like one five, seven, two. So I'd have to add that, oh, yeah, it'll be very close to one five, six, three, three, oh, nine, oh, one. So we actually hit it last year. It's been very, very hard goal to achieve. And I will tell you that when I started, I inherited a budget that brought the fund balance down to nine percent. They spent off of the fund balance in order to balance the budget instead of making those cuts that need to be bought. So within a very slow climb in the last couple of years, we will get there. But then we'll have something like the childcare fund, which they have forty-five thousand dollars in billables came back in under accruals that we will not see money from the state of Michigan for reimbursement and probably till probably November of this year. So we're always behind when it comes to the state of Michigan. So it makes me sad. I guess is the best thing I can say. So ideally you get to, you get to eighteen percent and then say that you're never going to dip below. Yeah, and I'm not real sure how you do that. You need more, more businesses. That's probably one of the biggest things to do. Obviously, if you have a steadier or housing incomes that come in, you're able to build more houses. That's going to add overall. I know Jamie was talking in regards to where we're at, being allocated for like an additional four hundred thousand dollars. But when you look at a budget that's a million, your percentage base is pretty low increase when it comes to that, especially when you know that you are going to need to put some additional money in towards your, towards your fund balance.
Have we, do we have any property tax incentives to bring in people for housing developments, apartment complexes, things like that? Have we ever, have we ever approached anything like that?
Well, those have been looked at. The issue is, it goes to county government. There are not laws that allow us to do that. We've did all sorts of weird odd things like one of the, one of the things that I was curious about when I first started or a couple of years in was, gosh, you go to all these places and there's this, this hotel tax that you can collect. Why can't we do that? Oh, we're not big enough.
Is it a township issue?
Yeah.
It's a township issue then, is what you're saying?
I believe that these cities and villages can offer incentives for that type of thing. There may be a chance that the townships can, but I don't know that for certain. I've never looked at it from the township angle. But I think they have more authority over being able to.
Are we go about finding that out? Because I'm, I'm new to this, but the, but I know the different, yeah, different, different counties. I know that, you know, you, you offer tax incentives, you bring in people, Bill. I know because the big thing is housing. I know that's one of Michelle's, uh, you know, kind of like that project. We need to have housing if we're going to have jobs here, more industry, things like that.
And that is, um, I think that's one of those areas where we have all these different bits and pieces. And you and I have had this conversation where being able to unify that and getting everybody, getting everybody to work together is probably the best. Our, two of our biggest challenges in Roscommon County is we are under population for a lot of the statutes that allow larger counties to incur certain taxes or collections or projects. And additionally, we are a, I call it an inverted triangle. We work township down where a lot of other counties, they work county down. Oh, the county grounds building and zoning that, you know, those things all.
Is there anything that, because I'm part of this. Is there anything that I can do on a, on a state level, maybe talk to our, I have no idea. Talk to our legislature for incentive units and, you know.
One of the big areas is the state revenue sharing plan that they're trying to push through. Where we would actually get what we're supposed to get would be just a huge study. That would provide a steady income base for us. Property tax can be a roller coaster, if you're a roller coaster. But you've seen, all of us have seen those years where the market was really, really good and we know that we were probably paying much more than we should have. And then all of a sudden, the bottom comes out. So the more steady that we can get, if we can get any type of projects to the area. You know, to, in order to gain like solar, so solar power credits, those types of things that we can do. I think those are the best things. So advocating for our businesses into the area. We have a very, very new brownfield redevelopment that is trying to acquire a property to put some larger projects, housing projects on. So trying to maybe help them pull those stores, push those stores and then get funding from the state would be huge.
Right, because there's a lot of disconnects going on in there between the townships, the counties, the state, all that stuff. There's a lot of disconnects.
And that, that is, that is one of our large problems. Yes, that is one of two. More steady income we can get, the better off everybody is.
If you can help me out, point me in the right direction.
I also would really like us to have a casino on the old Kirtland property because it brings in a lot of people to the area and they donate to county sheriffs, fire, EMS.
As long as they have a poker room.
And we have to lodging, exactly. See, these are win wins. My full disclosure, I'm trying to make sure somebody's picking up my daughter. They have early release today and I'm a little confused on if that's going to happen, so.
Talk, talk to me a little bit more about the casino aspect. Do we have, I mean, I'm, I'm serious, that could be big business for our, because there's nobody else around. And I mean, you got Traverse City and Mount Pleasant located in mid-Michigan would be a great spot to have a casino.
So we don't have a lot of, gosh, how many years ago have we, we've been talking about this, Sheriff? Yeah, since Kirtland was closing down their campus out there. So we can't find a direct connection to any Native American properties, but I'm sure it has to be there someplace or for someone to claim properties. Or.
They could buy it.
Correct. So the huge Kirtland property out there has been there for sale forever. Sorry, Mr. Rourke, I know you want to build things. But it's, how many acres? Two hundred acre property? It's in the middle of all of the woods in the townships. There's already roads that are established to go out there. It'd be, it'd be great to see somebody look at, look at investing in that. Sheriff did research and talked to other county sheriffs and associations because, you know, your big thought is, gosh, that's going to bring a lot more crime. That's going to bring a lot more alcohol that's going to bring. And it actually turns out it's.
More than we have now?
No, it actually turns out that that's, that's not true.
Yeah, because people are getting jobs and they're working there and they, and they have to pass drug tests and have to pass all kinds of tests.
We send buses out with people to other casinos. Send them here and retain some of that. The other portion is, like I said, they are big donors. There's a certain, certain rules, certain privileges where they have to give back X amount to those public services as well. Obviously, they police within their own with tribal. But for the most part, I mean, it's a pretty, you know, they're self, self-service for their staff. They're, you know, they're legal there, so it's a better idea than I think most people think.
I'd like to check into that.
I think that'd be great. I really do. I am.
Motion to resolution.
Oh, no, we forgot twenty twenty-three.
She just gone with twenty-two.
Yeah. So you have two other sheets on the general fund year to date. I will tell you that all of our special funds are well in line. The only two areas of concern, which for you, these are not new, new. They are continuous areas of concern. Is Vance still in here or did he leave? Okay, I'll hold Vance under the bus first. Overtime in central dispatch. Again, this is, this is perpetually staffing. We have applicants, but they're not quality applicants. Turnover for central dispatch, E nine oh one is always high. I think it's one of those jobs that people get into because it's good pay, good benefits. There is a lot of overtime, just like in any other public safety position. But there's something about being stuck in a monitor. Some people come in thinking because they're not a sheriff's deputy or they're not a firefighter or EMT or medic, that this is the best way to participate. And they find out that they can't be hands-on and they hate it. Other people go through those traumatic events. There's an infant choking, the infant passes and they're stuck there. They can't get that out of their mind. They can't debrief additionally. And then probably the third largest is they think they can multitask. They pass all the tests that say they can multitask. And then they see these face shade screens. You have fire EMS because we dispatch all three out of ours, fire EMS and police. Plus we have more law enforcement than, or at least law enforcement offices than especially other ones of our size. Or they'll get happy during the winter months only to realize that come summer, our population quadruples. So that, that can send, send them out. So that's a really high area. And then again, Sheriff is having, Sheriff is having that same kind of issue, but not for the same reason. So nobody wants to be in law enforcement because of, of the trend. However, both of them do have fund balances that will cover that difference as they come through. I have given you guys a snapshot of our twenty twenty-three budget. So for those things that are expenditures, that's this, I just realized, I'd like one. This cute little sheet right here, that's just one page. That is our expenditures, our expenditures I can actually run off to date for you because those are instantaneous as they happen. So just to give you a kind of idea, traditionally what I do is I go through and I will take where we're actually at. Not do this well. So I will take where we're actually at as of the date, which is actually four twenty-five. And come to an idea of where we're going to be predicted end of the year expenses. Some of this is just averages, which all of you know, a budget is just a really good educated guess. The other factor that I use to control this is historical spending. And then additionally, knowing what projects have been saved, what, what apportionments will have to go, what things must be paid. We certainly will not save on because we don't have a choice but to. So where, where we sit, we're looking at being slightly over about twenty thousand dollars from what we budgeted to. Traditionally, we either come right below or right at for expenditures. But I will mind, be mindful of you that as I was going through, I realized that I had to delete about eight categories of expenses because the last time I had done this was for, for twenty twenty-two's budgets, obviously, for presentation. So we're in that interesting spot right now where you know, I don't, I don't know that we're going to save any money in expenses. I don't know what you cut. I had hoped to be able to come to you at this meeting and say, hey, we're only paying IRS mileage at half cost to our employees. Can we bump it back up? But I'm looking at our budget and I'm telling you, no, I don't think that we should change anything as what's been established, maybe, maybe in June, if things look a little bit better. We do have a lot of expenses that come out in the first three months that are one-time hits. I try to take those into account. And they have missed one or two and that can change when it comes to June. But come June, we will have a much better idea of what it's going to look like because we have several, several departments, everything picks up. I mean, we get busier, we have more hearings, we have more meetings, we have more houses being sold. So as those picks up, we'll get a better idea of where we are with expenses versus revenues. Nobody is ungodly high in where they're going to come over. Probably the biggest area of concern for me was in our prosecutor's office. That being said, we did have to pay out an employee who had been here for thirty-two years and that employee had every bit of vacation and sick time possible to be paid out. So that was, that was a big chunk of their overage there. They may catch up on expenses because we are short on prosecuting attorney right now. But I estimated at full cost, hopeful that they'll be able to find somebody. Or anybody that wants to be a prosecuting attorney. I think you have to have degree. In regards to our revenues, percentages for revenues at this time of year are normally really bad to look at as a total percentage because we do not start getting our tax money until after those taxes go out and people having to start pay. We are normally right on board where we have predicted to be for current taxes. Some of the things that you'll see on the first page where I talked about the things that are, this is just how they happen. Trailer tax, swamp tax, those are things that are normally quite set. LCSA district payment. So this is the money that the state did away with personal property taxes. And so this is the money that they estimate we would have garnered every year off of personal property taxes. Every millage base budget has one, one payment that comes in, that comes into that. Liquor, liquor tax is set by the state. Interest, of course, is going to be variable, but it's probably going to be a little bit higher this year than we've seen in the last few years if things stay as are. Federal grants are always dependent on when we actually get them. So we budgeted for fifty-five thousand at the time and that fifty-five actually came in at the end of December. So that is one that if we can accrue it forward, we will do. I don't have that accounted for in our final over here in case that happens. Court funding from state, that is based off of an average of the number of court cases. File dockets basically as they go through state revenue sharing set. Sometimes we get it all, sometimes we don't. I can tell you already looking at the two payments we've received that we are. I can tell you already looking at the two payments we've received that we are. Going to be shy of what they told us they would give us again this year, probably about forty thousand dollars. The rest of them are, are pretty easy. Pretty easy to look forwards to. We do do cost allocation to all of those special funds for those services that are provided to them. That they would have to spend a lot more money on if they did, did on their own. Payroll benefits, those types of things. Each one of these is broke down and does have a title on it for you for the departments that fall under there. So hopefully this will be kind of a good cheat sheet. Overall, I'm going to guess we're going to be right on the money. Best case scenario. We're looking at probably being like maybe forty thousand shy. So that being said, as long as we don't have to allocate any additional funds to childcare funds, always your huge one. They have a, you know, they have a two million dollar budget, but half of that budget comes from us and half of that budget comes from the state. But the state seems to own all of the facilities right now. Again, speaking of things you can do as. Want to be the commissioner that goes to these juvenile detention planning meetings with me, I'll take it. Because if we don't have to pay the state. The amount that we pay the state can save money, that'll save money on what we have to send to the childcare fund. But yeah, so they own most of, about ninety percent of the facilities we send youth to. They set their fees annually and you pay them. But what they do is instead of handing us over six hundred thousand dollars as a match or eight hundred thousand dollars as a match. They say, okay, well, here's the eight thousand. We're going to subtract all this money. Oops, but you still owe us money because you sent these kids here. But it's not an actual match. So that can throw us into, we did have in. Have to look at Mark and David. I want to say it was like thousand and eleven where we ended up having to expend like one point five. We basically, we. That was another time. We were up to like a sixty percent fund balance and we had to spend almost a million dollars out of the fund balance to transfer to the childcare fund. Yes. But yes, so. So overall, things are going well. The clerk register of deeds office, that's a very good example of how what you see currently in collections. And change as the summer months go on. She's nodding her head because you can look at, and that's where like that historical knowledge for me comes into play. Is I know that I can go back and I can look at when those revenues peak for registered deeds. And when they drop again, so I can kind of take an estimate off of that as we go. So hers is a very, very good example of that. District court is another one that they can appear lower, but they'll get busier as the summer months go on. But for the most part, it's just making sure that what we can collect in fees and fines, we do collect. If we're supposed to charge, we do. Now I'm done with twenty twenty three. He's got his hand up.